Let me start again. Let me call to order the special city council meeting for the city of St. Helena for June 26th, and this session is devoted to appointments to various city boards and committees. And let's begin with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Doring.
Place your hand over your heart and pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. My proposal is to begin with the Active Transportation Committee, then the Parks and Recreation Commission, and then the Board of Trustees. Is there any public comment other than applicants?
How about a roll call?
Oh, we need a roll call.
Just to be clear.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Coburnstein.
So, let's begin with the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee. We have two slots and we have two applicants, Glenn Smith and Tom Vence. I don't see Tom. Glenn, did you wish to speak?
Only to say, Glenn Smith, Dean York Lane, only to say that it's been my privilege to serve on the committee for now several years, first as an alternate, and then as a regular member, and I've applied again to remain on the committee. I'm quite excited about the work that the committee's doing and feel that we're really concentrating on issues of sustainability, which I think are extremely important to our citizens. So I hope that you will reappoint me to the committee.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Smith?
Are there any particular initiatives that you can talk about that you're working on? One question, and then how is it that the city council can help you do your job in a better way?
Well, let me begin with the second question, and that is that the committee has been working over, actually, we've been doubling up on meetings. We've been having special meetings every month to, in order to work on what began as a sort of climate action plan. We took a look at the climate action plans of Napa, Calistoga, and Yanville, and particularly the Calistoga document, which we're using as a model. And we've been going through that and considering those areas where we might propose action for St. Helena. From that document, we will then try to select one or two items that the committee can really focus on. In particular, we're very interested in energy generation. There have been some proposals in the past to encourage citizens to consider distributed electrical generation, basically rooftop cells, and possibly as well for city buildings. You all are going to be constructing some buildings in the near future, I expect, and we would hope that electrical generation would be part of that. We also want to go back and look at how effective the conservation work was on water. Remember, we had some very specific proposals that were enacted on water conservation, community water conservation. Water use dropped materially. We're very interested in whether that has stayed low or whether it has gone up again, and whether there might be some practical promotional activities to remind people that water is still a precious resource and needs to be dealt with effectively.
All right.
Just following up on that, do these climate action plans, do they deal with trees and tree preservation as well?
Yeah, they dealt with a wide variety of things. First of all, they began by trying to assess the total footprint of the community on generation of CO2 and other elements of climate and, in sort of looking at sort of the world climate issues. We think that that is something, well, in fact, I think it's a requirement, it might be a state requirement, that every town have one. So we were mindful of a couple of things. One was to look broadly at how they approached it and where we might similarly look at things. But then, as I say, try to hone down on some things that our committee could really practically work on. But yeah, that would have been one. Idling trucks, you know, a whole variety of issues that went down in quite extreme detail. The city council, of course, has already acted on a number of things. The other thing that we wanted to be mindful of is that there's a good possibility that if we have a plan, then we may be able to market ourselves for, oh, golly, the word escapes me.
Grants.
Pardon?
Grants.
Thank you. Yes, exactly. My brother's first name. Yeah, so we wanted to be mindful of that opportunity.
You'll have to go through cycle analysis on that one.
That opportunity as well. Yeah.
Glenn, have you interacted at all with our planning director? And the plan to make sure that you guys are in sync with what's going to be going into the new general plan?
I've not been specifically involved in that. We have been mindful of the general plan, and we have talked about the possibility of the document being fed into the general plan in some way, either in whole or in part. And there clearly are some elements that we would want to have in there. Tobias is our liaison.
Okay.
And so he is, you know, well aware of that action. And then Jeff is our liaison as well, from the city council.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to our community. Very much appreciated. Well, thank you very much.
All right. I don't see Mr. Vence, so we'll go on to Parks and Recreation Commission.
May I just make a comment that both Glenn Smith and Tom Vence have done excellent work on the committee, so just to...
Good. We have two applicants here, Donna Hines and Noelle Strauss. But Strauss wrote in that she could not be here. I don't see Donna Hines. But in any event...
Yeah, and I am the liaison, and both of them are very active in the Parks and Rec Commission, so I would recommend their reappointment.
Okay, good. So that then takes us to the Board of Library Trustees, where we have five applicants, four slots. Emily Armstead, who's here, Mark Epstein, who's here, Skip Lane's here, Susan Swan, could not make it, and Rebecca Martin, who's here. Good. So would, why don't we just go down in the way they're presented here? And let me start with Emily Armstead. Would you like to speak just briefly? Now, I see your father's here. I hope he doesn't make you nervous.
Never.
And all I can remember from last night is reverence. Reverence for the library.
It's true. I have a great reverence for the library board. I am seeking reappointment. I've spent the past, I guess it's been more like one and three quarters of a year since I started in September instead of June, but it's been a really enriching experience, and I hope to spend the next two years fulfilling another term on the board.
Very good.
Talk about what your vision is for the library for, say, the next 20 years, both from a programming point of view and from a physical layout point of view. And if you wanted to speak for yourself, that's fine. If you want to represent the board, that's fine, too. So just like to hear from you.
Okay, sure. I mean, it's, I'm sure that the mayor can attest to this, but, I mean, at the library Board of Trustees meetings, I think we don't spend as much time talking about a larger advisory plan. Before last night's shape committee meeting, I hadn't considered that the library could be better served in a larger, I don't know, in a larger location. When we first had heard about the possibility of City Hall moving into the library, I mean, that was shocking and personally appalling. But last night was really eye-opening, and it made me consider things that I hadn't yet before, and so I'd have to say that my vision for the next 20 years is probably still developing, considering it's less than 24 hours old at this point. But yeah, I would like to see the library continue to prosper. I mean, I think that it serves well as an event space right now. I mean, we have many, many cultural events that come through after library hours, during library hours. The educational programs are strong, they're active in the summer. I mean, this year, this summer, we've got, I mean, an adult reading program, which is exciting. Like, there's a lot of things that are going on that I think are creating an enriching environment or enriching cultural place for the city of St. Helena, and I think theoretically, yes, over the next 20 years could be improved upon. I mean, I would love to see it grow even further, but I will say I think the library's doing a phenomenal job, as is.
Let me ask you this. Do you think it is an appropriate use of our authority to ask you or direct you or your Board of Trustees to think about the vision and come up with a vision and kind of lay that out for us? Do you think that's an appropriate ask from the city council?
I think that it's always appropriate to ask people what their thoughts are on a subject, and I think that the library Board of Trustees would appreciate the opportunity to come together to discuss and maybe form some form of cohesive stance on it. I mean, like I said, it's not been an item on the agenda in the board meetings that I've been to. I hope that that's not false. Okay, good. I've been paying attention. Great.
No, I think I said as much last night.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like, we, the library, I think, functions so well, and until last night, I really had not considered that we could be further maximizing, almost like exponentially maximizing, the library's current activities, especially in a new, in a new location, physical location.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to our community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Others may have.
I had a question.
We're not done yet.
Can I ask a question?
You're getting a question from the left now. You've got one from the right.
Okay.
You mentioned your generational perspective. Can you talk a little bit more about that? I mean, what do you bring to the board because of your age and also your experience? And I'd also like you to talk a little bit about just what you think the role of the Board of Trustees is, as you understand it.
Sure. Well, while it's fresh in my mind, I'll answer your second question first. I think that the Board of Trustees is, is there, not in any, not necessarily in a role to make decisions for the library, but almost, I think audit is also not quite the right word, but I think that we, we sort of validate the library's budgeting decisions. I think that we're, it's, you know, it's a committee that oversees the budget, we discuss the budget, we discuss the current activities taking place at the library, and so I think that it's, it almost seems like a third-party way to ensure that the library is an honest organization. I mean, do you understand what I'm trying to say? It's a...
Like, you're not into program development, per se, yourselves, but you hear what the staff has to say if they want a new program or how that works.
Right, and I think that there is an aspect of program development that exists, but it's not a requirement of the board, per se. I think that the St. Helena Library Board of Trustees has taken it upon themselves to discuss the programs, bring in different programs, things like that. But I would not say that it's a requirement, and I don't necessarily think that it should be a requirement, if that answers your question.
And the generational issue?
I have been in a lot of new libraries. I went to Santa Clara University, where I was able to serve on the search committee, the hiring committee for a new university library, and which is, of course, a multimillion-dollar budget at Santa Clara. And there really aren't even books at the Santa Clara Library, which is funny, it's a system that's almost entirely controlled by a robotic system, where if you need a book, then there's a robot that goes and pulls out the box in question and then brings it to library staff, and then they go into that box and pull out the book that's been requested. But it's a pretty unique situation, and so I think that generational, I mean, I've been in college recently, I guess, I graduated about five years ago, and so, I mean, within the past 10 years, I've been at at least three different libraries at universities that are, I think, contemporary, they're modern. I mean, that's not necessarily what I would advocate for the St. Helena Public Library, but I think spending time in different, getting a different, getting new perspectives and being involved in, being involved in that facet of education has been helpful.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions?
No, thanks, thanks very much.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. All right, then, Mr. Epstein?
I come to you as someone who's been a supporter and user of the library since I moved here 17 years ago, and I readily say I have no answers to the issues facing the library. If I said I did, you should laugh me out of the room, but I think I know some of the questions that need to be asked, and I can quickly summarize them as facilities, hours, and finances. If I may quickly review those. Facilities, I took a shape committee tour of the library late last year, and I was struck by its deficiencies, physical problems, that a consultant's report summarized as needing $200,000 of immediate attention, and there are longer-range, larger deficiencies. So I don't know where the money is coming from. The city has contributed, year in, year out, between eight and 11 percent roughly each year of the libraries, of the city budget going to the library. That's a lot. I don't know if that's sustainable over the long run, especially when we have the next economic downturn. So I think some creative thought needs to be given to financing the library and its rebuilding, whether it's a dislocation or another. Finally, in terms of major issues, we're one of the wealthiest communities of our size in the country, and I think we should be troubled by the fact that our library is not open seven days a week. It's currently open 45 hours. I think thought should be given to how those hours could be redistributed so that it's open every day. Let me also say that the library staff is terrific, and I would think the role of the trustees is to support their work. Earlier this year, Cecilia Raffo strenuously tried to find somewhere in the United States a book for me that was published in London but not here. After weeks of effort, she told me one copy was found, but she couldn't grab hold of it, then she advised me how to get it secondhand. So, I mean, that's the type of service, I think, we get at an astounding level from our library, and if I were appointed to the board, I would hope to support that work.
All right, good. Any questions of Mr. Epstein?
I've got one. You brought up the concept of the relative wealth of our community. Do you have any thoughts about how outreach to that community to help support the library? I'm not quite sure where we are on, you know, fundraising, that sort of thing. Do you have any ideas how that...
Well, I think the, since it was reorganized, the Friends and Foundation, which is not the trustees, has done a good job in the past couple of years increasing attention to the library through its January fundraiser every year, which I personally think is the best fundraiser in town in terms of enjoyment. I think there has to be a greater outreach to either foundations or some of our part-timers who are wealthy, to get people to support the library as a civic duty.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks very much. Thanks for applying for the position. Skip, Skip Lane, who's been serving as Chair of the Library Trustees.
Yeah, hi, I'm Skip Lane. I'm not quite sure how many years I've been on the board, but several. It's very important to me, long before I joined the Board of Trustees, I was a library patron, back to the days when it was in the Carnegie Building. And it's just become an important part of my life. I think the children's program there is without parallel anywhere. Leslie Stanton does a wonderful job. I've seen, to me, what's a distressing trend, which is the number of books loaned each month has been going down steadily ever since I joined the board, and I figure, are we doing something wrong? What's going on? However, the eBooks are increasing in numbers, so maybe it all evens out. I think technology is a major issue. We, our computers in the library are used heavily, and I think that's a wonderful asset for them. Like Emily, I went to the shape committee meeting last night, and as with her, my eyes were open somewhat. At our last board meeting, we came up with a resolution saying, this is our library, we don't want anybody else to touch it, it should only be used for library use. And after last night, I think that's maybe a little narrow-minded. I don't know where all the shape committee stuff is going to go, but I think, I asked Chris Creedon to put on our next agenda the future of the library, because I think whether we stay where we are, or whether we move or rebuild or whatever, we need to look ahead, as somebody said, for the 20-year plan, and whether it's Santa Clara University or some other place. I know there's a lot of ideas out there that we need to consider, and how to use our current space, as well as any additional space that we might get.
Skip, could you talk a little bit about the relationship of the trustees to the Friends and Foundation? Do, how you communicate or coordinate?
Well, yeah, we love the Friends and Foundation. Maria Estel, who's their director, is at every meeting we have and reports to us on a regular basis. We are certainly supportive of their fundraising activities. I don't know what we'd do without them. They pay for a lot of the part-time staff and a lot of the programming, so we would be short on programs if we did not have them, so we are intently focused on dealing with them and supporting them.
Well, I'm happy to hear your comments about last night. I think what we're trying to do here is just take a good look at things and keep an open mind and see where it goes, and I hope it's looked at as an opportunity and not really a threat, and, you know, that the city can provide whatever assistance they can provide to the board and to the friends to really delve into issues. And, you know, with people like Emily, who've had experience in other environments, too, I'm really confident you can work through, you know...
And if I may say, Emily's been a wonderful member of the board, and it's nice to have somebody of her generation on the board.
And did you know they won three games last night without us playing?
Oh, no, did they? Are we not needed?
Yes. I have to disclose, we're on the same page.
Conflict.
Talk about the thought process behind the current, I know it's a long, convoluted process that we went through, given some funding limitations and the number of days opened and closed, and how you arranged the different hours. I know there was some method to the madness, considering the budgetary constraints, but talk a little bit about that.
That, yeah, it was, we did a lot. We had a certain budget, it paid for so many employee hours, we couldn't expand on that. The Friends and Foundation came through to pay for a lot of the part-time employees, but we had, we were limited in how many hours we could be open, so the question is, okay, which days, which hours? And we went through a variety of possibilities. Nobody likes being closed on Sunday, but we tried being open then and closing at other times, and what we ended up with was the time that we felt the most patrons used the library. I don't know what other measure we could use, so that was the thinking behind that.
Thank you for your service to our community, and I know you do that in more ways than one, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Skip.
Thank you. All right, then. Next up is Rebecca Martin.
I have been a volunteer at the library for the last three years. I spend a couple hours a week in there. I've done events and now technical services, so the library has been a part of my life since I moved to St. Helena about four years ago, and I've just really grown to care about it, and I would love to take more of an active role in the direction of the library and the future of the library.
Can you talk about, a little bit about your background before you came to St. Helena?
Well, I've been in the wine industry for 10 years. I have a degree in culinary arts and hospitality management, and I've worked really just on the winery side, operations, hospitality, sales, marketing, pretty much anything. I have resumes if you guys want to see them. The last four years, I've been an operations manager for William Cole, and then in February, I started working for Ellers Estate as their membership director. So a lot of my work is kind of looking at the background of operations and seeing where there's inefficiencies and seeing where we can improve on what we do and how we operate and customer service and all of that.
And rest assured that we have, at least I have reviewed, we have received, I know your resume, and I have reviewed it.
No, but I think you make an important point. You have a very strong background in operations, and that's a valuable asset for the trustee board.
Yes.
I wanted to just ask a question about eBooks. That had come up earlier, and talking about moving the library into the future, does the library have a program where somebody can get a Kindle so that they can access those eBooks?
No, but you can easily, with a smartphone, get a book through the Kindle app.
Oh, okay.
It's just downloaded right to your phone for, through the three weeks, and it alerts you when it's about to pull from your phone.
Okay, and then it still uses the three-week sort of lending library idea?
Yeah, and you can check it out again if it's available. But yeah, I was actually in Canada a couple weeks ago, and I finished the book I had, so I downloaded a book from the St. Helena Library onto my phone.
Great.
Okay.
I'm wondering if, given your background, you've had an opportunity to get connected with the Wine Library, and if you have any thoughts about that part of the library?
Interestingly enough, like, I, my volunteer work kind of is separate from my day job. I, tech services, what I do basically is, it's like two hours of therapy where nobody asks me any questions, and I put stickers and stamps into books, and it's great, and I really enjoy it. Plus, I like handling books. I'm a big reader, and, so I have not really delved into the Wine Library or been so interested in the wine side of what we do there, just to keep it kind of separate.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, and Susan Swan is not here. She's been the minute keeper for the board and performs an exceptionally valuable service. Those minutes are exceptionally detailed, so anybody could go back and review exactly, almost close to verbatim, what the board has discussed from meeting to meeting, and she's an important contributor to the board. Is there any further public comment? All right, let me close the public comment side of the meeting, and I suppose unless there's any further council discussion, that the next, the next job for us is to rate the candidates on these rating sheets, which I'm not a big fan of these rating sheets because I think these candidates are all exceptional, and I don't like rating them. But nevertheless, that's the process the council has chosen, and so it seems to me that's where we are, the council's in agreement.
I just want to make a comment, my personal comment with respect to the library. I think this is, needed to be stated, at least from me. You can be, you can be in a position to challenge and want to improve and create opportunities for the library and push the library to a new vision, and also be a firm supporter of the library. The two are not mutually exclusive. So I'm speaking for myself. Both of my children have been in the library their whole lives, and for me, and it... And for me, and they're volunteers and active readers, and it's very important to me to see them connect to the libraries where they are now in their lives. One's still at the high school, but another one has moved off to Oakland, and he spends a lot of time in the San Francisco Library, the Oakland Library. The library was a special place for both of my children, and so the council has to weigh different issues and has a huge responsibility with regard to oversight and how we look at the library overall for the community. And I hope that you don't, that you don't take that as an affront. We want to be here to help the library, and I, for one, appreciate all the library does in terms of its, all the other things besides just distributing books. I firmly believe that, that is a healthy thing for our community, and so hopefully we can even make it better. So I just want to put that out there.
Okay, go ahead.
I agree. I think that the next step of the shape process is an incredible opportunity for the city to do something really beneficial and do it in a meaningful way, and by suggesting that the library look into its operations. I'm merely hoping to cover all the bases of what people really think they need in the near term and longer term, so that we do this in as thoughtful a way as possible and improve our civic assets to the extent we can. So I'm very encouraged by, you know, what some of you said tonight, and I think everything's going to come together at some point here.
Any further comments?
I can say this is about, this is probably the most difficult choice I've had to make in the last year and a half, being up here, because all of the applicants bring incredible things. My hope is that, I mean, we have five applicants for four spots. I hope whoever the fifth spot is, maybe we can find some way of creating a, some, something, or there's another committee that that person can be a part of, because I think what you bring is incredible. So, thank you.
Yes, thank, yeah, thank you all for applying.
Yeah, I would only add that I think for the last two years, it's hard to keep track of time, I must say. I've been a council liaison to the library board, and to me, it's a very, very finely functioning board. It's well-led. It has good materials that are reviewed at the meetings, and it's dealing with an operation that, apart from building issues that need to be addressed, works very well in this community, and I'm exceptionally proud of it, and to be associated with it as the liaison. So with that, I think our next job is to fill out these sheets and hand them to the city clerk, and then you'll run the tally, and do you let, do you hold the tally until our next meeting? Is that the way it's going to work?
Our six o'clock meeting. So when the item comes up and our new business...
So we will get to making the appointments at the six o'clock meeting, but there is, of course, no need at that point for any of you to speak again. That's the purpose of this meeting, and what will happen is that the clerk will report the rankings as she has tabulated them, and then the mayor makes the appointments. And in general, my inclination is to follow the recommendations, although I'm not required by law to do so. So there we are. Thank you all so much for coming.